Good evening. Good evening, calling to order the meeting, the City Council meeting of Monday, February 27, 2023, will all rise and salute the flag.
The flag of the United States of America is to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the people of the United States of America.
Roll club, the members, Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morbido.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Silvestri.
Yes, here.
Here, Councilor Visconti.
Here.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Keith.
Here, present.
Here, a quorum is present, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of February 6.
To order. Madam Clerk, before we begin tonight's agenda, I do want to offer a moment of silence for a long-term Revere employee and a member, someone that's very well-known to all of us, Mr. Albert Morelli, passed just this last week, I wanted to offer a moment of silence, he worked for the Residerevere for over thirty-five years as the Director of Elder Affairs, many people in the city know him very well, and his entire family, I believe his daughter is a teacher at the Wayland School, and just someone that offered a lot to our city, and certainly should take this honor to take a moment and offer our condolences to his family, just have a quick moment, thank you.
Calendar item number three, that the, motion presented by Councilor Powers, that the mayor be requested to direct the city solicitor or outside legal counsel to address the city council relative to the property status of 585 North Shore Road.
Councilor Powers. Thank you, Mr. President. Approximately three years ago, I met with the outside legal counsel, and the owner of the property, and two other individuals who were with him, and at that time, I had made suggestions with regard to this property, it's a dangerous building, we had an oil spill down there several years ago, people broke in there, I myself had trouble getting over the planks that were inside the building because many were missing. The fire department also has that building designated as a building that, you know, don't risk your life going in there unless there's people in that building that need to be saved, okay, just a bad situation. So about a year ago, outside legal counsel, after my prompting many times, came back and told me that the, we were owning, we owned the building at that time, the city of Revere owned the building, and I said, wow, that's great news, then I found out a month later that we didn't own the building, that the fellow had filed, that owned the building, had filed for federal bankruptcy, and under the federal bankruptcy laws, that stops everything at the time, okay, I am sure that there is money owed on that building, there was at the time much tax arriage, and also arriage on the fees issued by the building department for the condition of the building, so I've asked the, our attorney in the Department of Municipal Services to come up here and explain, number one, where we are with this building now, I want to see it torn down, it's a danger to the people down there, and it's also not a pretty building to look at when people coming through our city, I want to know what the arriage is on taxes, if there's any, and I want to know what the arriage is on fines, if there's any, and I'd also like to know where we are going now, what our position legally is with regard to this building, so we can get it down as quickly as possible, and maybe get something in there that works for the neighborhood, city, and our tax bills, okay, so would you please?
Council, Council Powers, thank you.
Good evening, Council, good evening, Council President, Cheryl McCormick, on behalf of the Department of Municipal Inspections. So first, I want to respectfully remind the council that this matter is currently in active litigation, that means that I'm very limited as to what I can inform you, as well as what I can answer. With that said, I'll provide you a brief update, we know in February of 2018, the city filed a land court action for foreclosure on its tax titling, that action is currently open and pending and is on hold. October of 2019, we know the property owner filed a Chapter 11 bankruptcy petition in the U.S. Bankruptcy Court, District of Massachusetts, which we know is a federal court, which has a federal judge, that action is open. November of 19, the property owner filed an adversary proceeding against the city, and the bankruptcy court against that matter is closed. Why the long delays? I hear you loud and clear, Council Powers, I can tell you that this has been in litigation, active litigation for five years, the length of time is due to the complexity of these matters, and of course, the effect that COVID has had on the court system, which caused significant delays out of everyone's control, the courts are still dealing with the backlog. Although there are currently two pending actions in court, the action, the land court, is on hold, and the bankruptcy, the bankruptcy action in federal court is the primary action. There's a bankruptcy stay, and what does that mean? When you file for bankruptcy, an automatic stay goes into effect, which temporarily stops creditors and other collection agencies from making collection efforts, hence why the city cannot force any other action at this time. It should be noted that the city has and continues to actively and aggressively protect its legal interest in all legal proceedings, and continues to do so till today, however, it is out of the city's hands at this time. I understand that this can be challenging for all of you, given the ongoing conditions of the property, but ultimately, we must respect, be patient, and understand the court's authority, and wait for further directives from the court, while we remain fierce advocates with the ultimate goal of having the property brought back into full compliance. Thank you.
Let me ask you a question, Council Powers. Is there an outside area with regard to the building condition staying like that, being a problem for the people that may wander into that building, and we did have kids going in there, and nothing's being done about it, and that's the thing that troubles me most.
So I can tell you with regards to the condition, nobody wants to see the condition of the property remain, but I can tell you, our hands are tied with further action pending the outcome of the bankruptcy action. The whole purpose of a Chapter 11 bankruptcy is that the petitioner, the debtor, would come up with an approved plan to pay its debt, it's premature to proceed any further until we get further directive from the court.
Well, it's not only paying a debt, okay, that's part of it, I think the central part of it is getting the building demolished, there was a house attached to it in the back, and there were people living in there at one point, and this creates a very unsafe position for our residents. Could you tell me, have we received any communications from the federal bankruptcy court?
It's currently pending, and there's, there's dates on the calendar of when the next proceedings will happen, but right now, the federal action in federal court is what's, what trumps all other proceedings, and it prohibits us from taking any further action to enforce.
I understand that, I understand that, but certainly, don't the, doesn't the bankruptcy court have a schedule with regard to where items are on their agenda?
There is a tracking schedule that I'm not privy to, but there is one.
Is there any way we can get an idea, is to, you know?
Absolutely.
I would appreciate that very much, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you, councils. Any of the councils have questions for Ms. McCormick? With that being said, please disunfile.
Thank you.
Calendar item number four, public hearings, hearing called is ordered on the application of John Duran, 18 Hitchborn Street, Revere, Mass, requesting permission from the Revere City Council to convert the existing laundromat into a health club at 895 Broadway, Revere, Mass.
This is a public hearing, asking for any proponents, proponents, name and address for the record, please.
My name is John Duran, I'm looking for vision to convert, I mean, to open a business in 897 Broadway Avenue, which previously was laundry, so we're trying to put a gym, which basically classes for people not open to the public, just so people attending classes, so we're proposing forty people over there, because it's not gonna be full all the time, it's personalized classes for the business.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents, any other proponents in the audience, seeing, hearing, and I'm going to close that side of the hearing, any opponents, any opponents, seeing, hearing, and I'm going to close that side of the hearing, any councils wish to speak on this? Councilor Cogliandro.
This is technically your ward now, Mr. Powers, thank you, just, just a quick question, the application and the motion says 895 Broadway, that's a duplex, so this is just 897 where Speedy We Wash was, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you're going to be turning this into a gym, are you going to be doing classes, group classes, private lessons, I assume?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President, sir, there's a, as you well know, there is an existing building there now, on this, on top of a, I think it was a two or three-family house.
Not in the top, in one side.
Okay, what are your plans for that building that's there now?
Pardon me?
What are your plans for the building that's there now?
He's asking what your plans are for the building, that's to transfer it into a gym, a gym or some sort of a health class, health club classes, correct?
Yes, for classes, yes.
He wants to, he wants to do some sort of fitness activities inside of the building.
So you're gonna have two buildings there now, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, this, this business is gonna be in one side of the existing building, it's, it's not in the top, it's one side, separate, like five feet from the building, it's in the same lot, but it's separate.
Because I, I've looked at the plan, and it shows two buildings, one in the back, which I assume would be the new building?
It's only one lot, yes, it's only one building, yes, sir.
Okay, and that's, when this is all done, if it's done, it'll just be the one building there, and the two-family or three-family house, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other councils, Council, Council says, Silvestri.
Thank you, Ms. President, what will the parking situation be? If you're expecting forty-five clients, I suppose, forty-eight clients, where will the parking be situated in that area?
Well, there is existing two, up to three parkings in the front, and it's two existing parking in the area of the building, but the special situation for these businesses is basically for the young community, because the young people is taking classes, the majority of these people has no car, is walking people, which is gonna be a positive impact for the community, because there's not gonna be a traffic problem over there, and it's not gonna be the old people at the same time, because it's gonna be two or three people giving classes, so it's gonna be one person per, per teacher, so it's not gonna be a crowded business.
Thank you, any other councils? Mr. Duran, I had a similar question to Council Silvestri, I know it's on Broadway, so there's definitely, there's spots in front as well, certainly, this is just the public hearing part, and you'll be going through a couple more pieces in front of the council, and then in front of site plan, et cetera, but sure, certainly, if you're gonna run a good business, you're gonna wanna have to make sure you accommodate those that are coming in there, so I'm imagining you will, I hope you will, and we'll see where that goes, but at this point, it's gonna be referred to zoning on March 6, 2023.
Thank you.
Calendar item number five, hearing called is ordered on the application of Michael Acasoli, trustee of MAC Realty Trust, 28 Switzer Street, Wakefield, Mass, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to reconstruct and extend a non-conforming use in pre-existing non-conforming structure that burnt down in a fire in May of 21, for the purpose of constructing a new six-unit residential building with six off-street parking spaces at 141-143 Endicott Avenue.
This is a public hearing, and we're gonna open this up to proponents. The proponents in the audience, feel free to come up and speak.
Good evening, City Council President and councilors.
Name and address.
My name is Nancy O'Neill, and I am an attorney located at 14 Proctor Avenue, I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Michael Acasoli, trustee of the MAC Realty Trust, I am joined here tonight by Mr. Acasoli, as well as our architect and engineer, the application is for the reconstruction and extension of the non-conforming structure at 141 to 143 Endicott Avenue, which was destroyed by a fire in 2021, as you can see here. Due to the age of that structure, which was constructed around 1920, the request to reconstruct the building must come before the city council. The proposed reconstructed building, which you can see here, is substantially similar to the 1920 building, the building formerly contained six units, the proposed building will also contain six units, the proposed building will also be, it'll be slightly longer, but will be a little bit more narrow than the previous building, a ground-floor parking garage is planned, which would provide six parking spaces, the previous building not have any onsite parking, the addition of the ground-floor parking accounts for the expansion of the building. The six units will be offered as condominiums to increase homeownership in the city, overall, the reconstruction represents a significant improvement over the current condition of the lot, will lessen congestion in the neighborhood by providing parking, and will allow for additional homeownership opportunities. We are happy to get into further details regarding the project, and answer any questions at subcommittee, thank you.
Thank you, and again, this is the public hearing, so we want to make sure we're hearing from any opponents and proponents, so listen, as a proponent, any other proponents in the audience wishing to come to speak, any proponents?
I'm actually not sure where I stand, my name is Kenneth Orne, 138 Endicott Ave, we live directly across from Withers fire, and Withers building is being built, I'm not sure they're doing anyone a favor with the underground parking, because with this project, all street parking from 139 up to 157 will be non-existent, so unless these, these buildings, the units, the condos are gonna be single-family, or one-bedroom, if you put multiple bedrooms in there, obviously, there's gonna be multiple cars, I think the ordinance for the city or the variance is one and a half, or one and three-eighths cars, which I don't understand, but whatever that is, it still leaves the, the street with a parking problem, that's not what my problem is, I have a three-car driveway, my problem with this, with this unit is the flooding, there's water coming off the hill, that's been a problem to all the neighbors, and Mr. Acasoli is aware of this problem, because they've, they've tapped a pipe into the hill to drain some of the water off, to try to mitigate where the water was coming from, I'm not sure who did it, or it has to be someone from his company, or someone that they hired, because it's on their property, I'm there as a neighbor, because now that that building's not there, the water is affecting our property, so if there's something that they're going to do to mitigate that water coming off the hill, I know Joanne McKenna is aware of the water problem, we have it throughout the city, but that's a big problem to the neighborhood.
Thank you. If we can just note some of the, for the zoning subcommittee, if we can make sure we note some of these, so that we're making, getting good answers on those, thank you. Any other proponents in the audience? Hearing, hearing, and seeing, and I'm going to close that side of the hearing, any opponents, any opponents wishing to speak?
Hi, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Laura Ross, and, say it again, well, currently, I don't live in Revere, because my house was burnt down.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
So currently, I'm residing in Winthrop, but I lived previously at 149 Endicott Avenue, and I'm rebuilding to move back in hopefully soon. I, there's, this is very emotional for me to be here, because this was a very traumatic event, which the ripple effects of having a house fire just go on and on and on, my family, this was the family home, my parents were Lynn and Bob Mazzarella, they were from Beauchamp, everyone in the community knew them, they called them Mr. and Mrs. Jolly, I know many people on the city council may have known them, they did nothing but give to the city, they were members of the church, everyone in, like, neighbors, we all were very close in the neighbor community, and they moved out, and I moved in with my family, my children, I was a single parent, and I was the neighbor to Michael Acasoli, his trust, his building, and it was a long twenty years, I don't feel that he was a good neighbor, and I don't mean like, I need to borrow a cup of rice, I mean, like, there are people that are in your building that are making it unsafe for me and my children to reside, there are animals in your building that are making it unsafe for me and my children to reside, there are people smoking in your building that are making it unsafe for my children and me to reside, this is not a one-time conversation that I had with him, there were lots of dangers on that building, and I think a neighbor is someone that you can approach and feel comfortable having a conversation with, I approached him with lots of nervousness, knowing my, knowing who I am, and knowing who Michael Acasoli and the Acasoli name is, and, you know, big, you know, he's a lawyer, he's coming in from Tufts University and all of that, that comes with the whole presentation of him as a person, and how he does business, and then there's me, little woman who's lived in the neighborhood, single parent, trying to do the best that I can, and I had to bring things to him, and when I brought things to him, it wasn't accepted, like, I'm really sorry about that, how can I make this better, there was always an excuse, I don't, I don't, I don't think that that's being a good neighbor, when you're a big person in charge of a company, I think you should be proactive, the people that came to clean his building and clean his yard, smoked, and left their cigarette butts all over the neighborhood, they were rude to my children, they were rude to me, when I would say to them, can you tell Michael that this is going on, they would go, I'm not, they would laugh, like, they're representing you, and so that, to me, that representation of their response, about me saying, well, this is not okay with the neighborhood, there's a dog that got loose that's in my yard, there's dog crap in the backyard, there's a grill on the back deck, there's people nodding off that don't live in that apartment on the back deck, I see them in my kitchen window, my concern is that, I know what I've had to go through to rebuild, maybe, I'll get back my one-family house to what it used to be, everything else is gone, fifty years, everything is gone, and there's been so many fires in the city that I'm sure other people understand this, but he is grandfathered in to build on his current footprint, he should have to build in his current footprint, he should not be given any variances, variance should not go to someone who's not a good neighbor, variances, who knows what happens if the market crashes, and he can't sell his condos, is he gonna rent them? I was told before, he just go, I just, I had these kids move in here, because they had good credit, well, I mean, I'm the one that gets left sitting next to six families of who knows what, and six parking spaces, as Kenny said, isn't necessarily gonna make anything better for that, and he wants to go up higher, to have a rooftop deck, where they're gonna what, perhaps grill out on and look over my house? There was a fire, before the final fire, there was a fire previously, it was started by a cigarette, it was in the front of his old building, it was the same family that flung a cigarette out the back of his building, and set the whole neighborhood on fire, and everyone wants to say, like, this is a win-win situation, it's great for the neighborhood, it looks great, did anybody from MAC call Laura Ross, did anybody from MAC contact any of the people in the community and ask them how they felt about it, have us sit with them and his plans? Before this fire happened, he said, don't worry, I'm gonna get rid of this, I'm gonna put four units with parking underneath, and I hear it's gonna be six units, and you wanna go further back, and you wanna go higher up, and you haven't talked to anybody in this community, the last words he said to me, the day after my family home was destroyed, and me and my daughters were homeless, he said to me, this isn't my fault, I am 100% against having a businessperson like that come into a family-oriented neighborhood where generations of family continue to own houses in this neighborhood. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions, but I do have lots of documentation about conversations between him and I, if it's needed, thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I apologize, just because I didn't understand it first, so you're still the neighboring.
I'm still, I'm directly next to him.
You're still on the property next door.
Right, so any, and for insurance purposes, a house burnt down, they're not gonna just give you insurance when this other house is gonna, I know they're gonna make it slimmer, they're gonna make it go further back, but they're asking for more, they couldn't do enough with what they had before, what would more look like?
Understood, thank you, very much. Any other opponents in the audience? Hearing, and seeing, and I'm going to close that side of the hearing, any councilors wishing to speak, Council McKenna, name your ward.
Thank you, Mr. President, this is my ward, I agree with Laura, this landlord was not a good landlord, he, people were grilling on a hundred-year-old wooden structure, they were smoking, he had raccoons in the, in the roof that were going in and out, he was asked to stop this, and he didn't, what I'm afraid of going forward is, he's asking for a roof deck, and I think we should, as, as a council, we should put some stipulations on this, first of all, if there is a recession, that he cannot rent, he cannot rent the condos, I think there's an ordinance that you can't change condos back into apartments, so I think that would settle that part, I don't think there should be a rooftop on the top deck, because of his past, you know, behavior, I don't think, I mean, it, like you said, Laura, is there gonna be grilling on the top of the, you know, on the top of the roof, thank you, that's the other thing, you're going eight feet up, are the people that are in back of there, that live on Bellingham, are they gonna be blocked by this roof deck? Because, as you know, Endicott and Bellingham have waterfront views, so, I mean, there are a lot of things that he ignored during the years, and I feel bad for you, six houses got burnt that day, it was a major, major fire, we had, that people lost everything, animals, belongings, pitches, everything, we have to do it right this time, I don't feel that the parking is a problem, but I do feel that going up eight feet is with a roof deck, and who knows who's gonna grill, or what's gonna happen, so that's my view on this, thank you.
Thank you, Council, any of the councilors? It's gonna go, it's, yes, it is gonna go to committee, I think we all have a lot of questions, certainly, but that means we can certainly talk a lot in zoning subcommittee, and I hope Attorney O'Neill that you'll take into consideration the questions that one of the Director Butters had, and certainly the questions and comments that Council McKenna had, and we look forward to seeing that on March 6, zoning subcommittee.
Calendar item number six, unfinished business, communication from Dr. Joseph Spinazola, presenting information on the Foundation Trust grants available for the city of Revere.
Good evening, Council President and councilors, my name is Joseph Spinazola, 630 Main Street, Melrose, I am the Executive Director of the Foundation Trust, and the Foundation Trust is a philanthropic organization known to Revere, in fact, you know, with help from Councilor Rizzo, we came to Revere first when we started awarding grants to city programs and nonprofits in the greater Boston area, and now this is the first year since the pandemic, we're back to our full grant cycles, and Revere is one of our priority communities for 2023, and is one of our priority communities overall, and so we have grants that are available, yeah. The applications are due at the end of March. I have information for the councilors if I'm able to pass those out so that you can share them with the nonprofits and city programs in your wards. There is a, an online town hall on Wednesday of this week. I'm also happy to do a meeting with Revere nonprofits and Revere city programs between, you know, if that time doesn't work, to provide more information about the grants and how to apply for those.
All right, thank you. Can I pass them? Yeah, absolutely. You can hand them to the clerk. She'll pass them out for you. While he's passing those out to the, Councilor Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And, Doctor, welcome. Great to have you here. I'll be very, very brief because there's really, I don't think this is gonna be much of a contentious debate. You're here to, you're here to provide philanthropy for our city and, and, and obviously, we greatly appreciate it. It's always great to have people who remember where they came from, who have, who have, who have been successful and, and want to give back. There's, there's really not much more of a noble calling. So we just, I just wanna say on behalf of myself, I appreciate you and your family and thank you for all you do.
Well, if I can just speak on, you know, echoing Councilor Rizzo's sentiment, you know, I think that every, every community needs more people and more groups and organizations that recognize when they have a little bit more to give, to be able to give back. And I think it's admirable. So I, I would highly empower the residents of Revere and the, the nonprofit organizations in the city to try to do their best to reach out to Mr. Spinazola and the, and the Foundation Trust. You said Wednesday, can you just repeat that? So Wednesday evening, there's going to be a...
Yes, Wednesday at 4:00, there's an online town hall, the Grants Are Due, March 28th. And I will say that in the last cycle back in 2019, we had received more applications from Revere than any other city, better applications from Revere than any other city. And we gave out more awards to Revere than any other city. And that had a lot to do with the city councilors and the mayor's office in making, making people aware of, of the initiative. So I hope the same thing happens this, this round.
That's wonderful. And so can you just give the viewing audience, so, to, in order to join that, that town hall?
Oh, sure. There's a QR, there's a, inside those bags, there's a, there's a QR code with information, but also at foundationtrust.org, there's information on how to zoom into the town hall. And I can also be reached by email or phone. So all, all that information is in that packet.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Admirable. And thank you very much. And that's, so we're gonna place this on file. Thank you for the communication.
Next up is the Appointment Subcommittee Report.
Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had five items on the agenda. Each one of these was voted out unanimously by the Subcommittee. If there is no objection to taking all of these up at once for one roll call...
Anyone have an objection? No? Madam Clerk?
Shall the City Council confirm the appointments listed on the agenda? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sylvestry?
Yes.
Yes, Council Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed. Next up is the Ways and Means Subcommittee Report.
Councilor Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a little while ago, we obviously had a very timely meeting at, at the Ways and Means Subcommittee regarding the schematic design of the new high school. Most of us were all here, so, and know what went on. So it was voted out favorably, a four to two vote, and I asked for a roll call.
Madam Clerk?
Shall the City Council approve the Revere High School Project's schematic design submission to the MSBA, including the presented scope, schedule, and budget? Councilor Cogliandro?
No.
No, Council McKenna?
No.
No, Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselsky?
Present.
Voting present. Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rizzo?
No.
No, Council Serino?
No.
No, Council Sylvestry?
Yes.
Yes, Council Visconti?
No.
No, Council Zambudo?
No.
No, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the motion fails.
Spitting of rules. Hopes for immediate reconsideration and the hopes it'll not prevail.
Reconsideration? We need a roll call for that as well?
Do you want a roll call?
Would you like a roll call?
All in favor.
All in favor? No.
Who voted, sorry, who just said no on that, so I get it recorded. Thank you. On calendar item number 13, that was also in the report, there was long-range financial Calendar item number 14, communication from the city auditor relative to the certification of free cash.
So this is gonna require a few different roll call votes. Madam Clerk, would you like, does Ms. Visca have to come up? No? Okay. Nope, he's... Please.
On the four votes for free cash, one, shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $888,641 from free cash to the General Fund Stabilization Fund? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sylvestry?
Yes.
Yes, Council Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, that transfer has been approved. Next vote from free cash, shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $1,184,855 from free cash to the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sylvestry?
Yes.
Yes, Council Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes. The third transfer request, shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $250,000 from free cash to the other post-employment benefit trust fund? Council Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselsky? Voting yes. Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sylvestry?
Yes.
Yes, Council Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, that transfer has been approved. And lastly, shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $335,470 from water and sewer free cash to the Water and Sewer Stabilization Fund? Council Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sylvestry?
Yes.
Yes, Council Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Calendar item number 15, communication from the city auditor relative to the appropriation to the high school stabilization fund.
Right. Madam, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Call the roll. Does anyone have any questions regarding the communication from the auditor? I mean, this is probably gonna be something that we're still gonna wanna utilize if we wanna fund some sort of a high school. Right? Project's dead?
If, if I may, it's two-thirds vote in and two-thirds vote out. But honestly, at this point, I don't see really the need for the, the appropriation at this point. It seems like we're back to the drawing board. So I would, I would have you consider not to vote that. We can probably put it towards other uses.
Thank you. We're gonna withdraw this. Place on file.
Calendar item number 16, communication from the city auditor relative to the appropriation to the annual sand sculpting festival.
Do we wanna build sand, sand castles this year? Roll call, please.
Shall the City Council...
$175,000 for sand sculptures. Is everyone okay with that? I, I mean, I think it's frivolous at this point. Roll call.
Shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $175,000 from free cash to the sand sculpting festival? Council Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sylvestry?
Yes.
Yes, Council Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President, I'm sorry, Council, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. Calendar item number 17, communication from the city auditor relative to the free cash appropriation to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $592,428 from free cash to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? Council Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sylvestry?
Yes.
Yes, Council Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. Calendar item number 18, communication from the city auditor relative to the Police Patrol Memorandum of Agreement.
Mr. Visca.
Good evening. Before you is the signed memorandum of agreement for the Police Patrolmen's Association contract. This is pretty perfunctory. It's a request to fund the contract as agreed upon. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Visca. Any questions for Mr. Visca? Any comments? No? Call the roll.
Shall the City Council approve the appropriation necessary to fund the memorandum of agreement between the city of Revere and the Revere Police Patrol Officer Association, covering the period of July 1st, 21 through June 30th, 24? Council Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sylvestry?
Yes.
Yes, Council Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number 19, communication from the Director of Veteran Services requesting various veteran memorial pole locations. Council Sylvestry is recused from discussion on this matter.
Good evening, councilors. This evening, we have two poll requests coming before us. The family of veteran Peter...
Peter? Correct?
Yeah. Peter Serbone. He was originally born in East Boston. He, he raised his family here. Peter and his parents, Anthony and Aunt Marie Serbone, moved to Folsom Street in Revere shortly thereafter, moved to 817 Broadway in a home which he owned with the Chica, Chica Telly family. In 1939, Anthony and Aunt Marie Serbone purchased the house on 25 Prince Street, later changed the address of Prince Street and grew up near the Rosetti Street, which was an undeveloped farmland at the time. He attended Lincoln School through, grade through one through eight. He attended Revere High School where he played varsity basketball and football. He graduated the graduating class of RHS in 1951, when he enlisted into the U.S. Army to serve overseas during the Korean War, from 1953 to 1955. Peter met his wife, Merrill Bernstein, from the Summer Street in Revere. Prior to entering the service, they were later married in 1956. They went on to have five children on Prince Street, Richard, Peter V., Roseanne, Andrea, and James, which his son James was the integral part of putting this forward before us tonight. In 1971, Peter built a home, a four-family home, an undeveloped lot on Rosetti Street. And there he was with Merrill. He raised his family. He then, Peter Serbone was a loving member and growing member of the city. He loved the city of Revere, and I think it's an honor that we bestow, bestow upon him in giving him a dedicating poll. Also, we have a veterans poll going up for Robert Randy Stott. Robert Stott, also a Korean War veteran, also born in East Boston, raised his family a long time. He was married to Lucy Sardo. They raised four children, Bobby, Patty, John, and Dino. And they would also request a poll at the Connor of Sicilian and Washington Ave. Now, I ask for those polls to be approved by this honorable council. And just to add to that, we do have several polls that are baiting, are being awaited to be replaced currently. Those polls will start going up May 1st, when the spring breaks. The, those polls will go up, and the ones that were replaced, these polls here will be recognized on Memorial Day at our Memorial Day service, and then their later date will be approved to, to have the dedication to the poll.[1628.33] to the poll. I believe that may have answered your question, Counselor Powers, on the missing polls.
With regard to Butler Circle?
Butler Circle will be replaced May 1st.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Counselor Silvestri. VSL Silvestri. Which are you right now? VSL? All right, great.
Ms. President?
Counselor Rizzo?
Thank you very much. I'll just be very brief, but I did want to comment on actually these two families, and I just happen to know them personally. Wonderful, wonderful families. Peter Serbone, one of the kindest, gentlest guy that you'd ever meet in your life. Just a real, real credit to the city of Revere, as is his family. So, very, very fitting that, you know, you're proceeding with this poll. And also, the Stott family, as you know, as many of us here know, they're longstanding family here. Again, another highly respected family, well-deserving of this honor. So, I'm hopeful that I'll be in attendance for both of these dedications, and appreciate you putting them in for this recognition.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Rizzo. Any other councils? Is it gonna, all in favor? Counselor Silvestri is recused. Sorted.
Motions. Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Counselor Rizzo that may request our state delegation to file legislation that would bring into question the Dover Amendment, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 3, that was originally adopted in 1950. The statute mandates that proposed religious and educational land uses be given more favorable treatment than other proposed uses, such as residential, commercial, or industrial, under local zoning ordinances and bylaws. Currently, the failure of a city or town to accord such favorable treatment may lead to protracted, inexpensive litigation, and in some cases, allegations of unlawful discrimination that can have led to extreme civil penalties amounting into the millions of dollars. This amendment is antiquated, in particular as urban communities have grown more densely populated.
Counselor Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Ms. President. This motion, as probably all of us here know, was put in in response to a project that had been proposed down on Arcadia Street. They, the neighborhood pulled together like nothing I have ever seen, made their voices heard in virtually every single corner that they would possibly have access to, and ultimately worked out an agreement with the owner of the property, or the soon-to-be owner of the property, the developer, to look at alternative plans, which, God willing, the city council will be supporting in the not-too-distant future for, I believe it's gonna be six townhouses as opposed to a twen- I'm sorry, five townhouses, my bad. Five townhouses as opposed to the initial proposal, which was a 24-bed homeless shelter slash education facility slash, I don't know what else they refer to them as. I think, you know, again, this is one of these situations. I think we're all in agreement. We want to be able to help people who need it. We certainly want a roof over everybody's head. But we've got to be, I think, a little bit strategic on where we place these facilities. This Dover Amendment was enacted back in 1950, and I don't know what the population was in Massachusetts, or more specifically, the population in Revere was back in 1950. But I have to believe that it was significantly smaller than what we have today. And times are different today than they were in 1950. So, you know, I just think that the legislature, I don't have any specific suggestions to the legislature, unfortunately, but I know that it needs to be tweaked, because right now, I think we're in a situation where if developers know that if they can implement the Dover Amendment in virtually any neighborhood that they want to build in, they can use this as leverage to get what they want, to go forward with plans that might otherwise be declined by a local city council, or Board of Aldermen, or whatever it is. So, this really needs to be looked at, so other neighbors don't find themselves in a situation that the Arcadia Street neighborhood found themselves in, where they were fighting for themselves, fighting for their families, not wanting a large institution in the middle of a small residential neighborhood. So, I'm more than willing to work with our state delegation. We've, you know, obviously, we have very competent people in the legislature. We've got Representative Janino, Representative Turco, and Senator Edwards, all highly qualified. And I think if we all put our heads together, and they with their colleagues, we might be able to come up with something that will protect neighborhoods like theirs from not becoming victims to developers who just want to build and hold this over their head. That is not what I think the Dover Amendment was originally meant to do, was to be able to be used as a tool. And I don't think that should happen. And I'm not suggesting, by the way, that that was the case in, you know, with this project. I'm not saying that. In fact, the initial project was shot down, so this might have been just a backup plan for them. They came forward with that original plan. But, you know, as we started getting into it and thinking about it and seeing the bigger ramifications, I think there is a problem with the way it currently sits right now in the state of Massachusetts, and I think it needs to be tweaked. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with the motion wholeheartedly. As a matter of fact, when I was first approached, being the ward counselor, this plan, this request was mentioned to me, and I said, "The first thing you have to do is have a neighborhood meeting down there," which I did at Santorini's. There were probably 35 or 40 people there at Santorini's. I see some of them in the audience here tonight. And the point is that if we hadn't had that meeting, and many times, we don't have meetings, neighborhood meetings on certain things, they could have been digging out the ground down there for foundation March or April. And so, this came about because of the meeting, and we made people aware. And I think that maybe there should be a way that, once something like the Dover Amendment comes out, that the people living in the area, not the people, but maybe the mayor, the city council, whatever it might be, needs to be made aware that there is a, this is being proposed down there. Because Dover Amendment, you don't just, you go in and you start digging your trench, and you start pouring your foundation, and before you know it, everybody's saying, "What happened?" So, I think that people have to pay more attention, particularly city officials. And I did it certainly when I asked for that meeting. And I know that, I believe, there was a reluctance in the part of the attorney to have that meeting. But, and then when it was, they had the meeting, not everybody on those streets were notified. And that's, they went in, they used the 300-foot mark to say they notified the residents when people that lived in the St. George, which is right in back of the property, notified people in there and a few people next to the property, and nobody knew what really, what they were proposing. So, I hope this motion, I'm sure it'll pass, and it's a good motion. Yes, sir.
Counselor?
Oh, thank you.
Counselor?
Yeah.
I mean, please, can you?
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay?
I just want people made aware, that's all, Mr. President.
Address the chair, please. Please, address the chair when you, okay? Thank you. Any other councils?
Yes.
I'll just, Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank Anthony Pazziali for not bringing his megaphone. Can we just start there? Thank you so much. Ned Almeida, Doug Brecher, Stephen Fiore, you guys led this charge. Thank you for letting me be a part of it. Don't ever let anyone tell you, there's never a fight. I'm very proud of what you guys did. Good job.
Counselor Morbido?
Mr. President, so, I concur with my colleague to the left when he says there has to be more detail when we send it to the legislature, because they're gonna look at this and be like, "Well, what's your suggestion? What's your solution? What do you want done?" But I think the city should have some more control over issues like this, especially when something's crammed on the residential dead end. So, I am in favor of this.
Thank you. And Counselor, if I could, anyone else know? Just, you know, good motion, Counselor Rizzo. I agree. I think that getting in front of our state delegation is an absolute must. We often get threatened. People come up here all the time, and they threaten the residents, and they say, "We're gonna do a 40B." Up until a month and a half ago, a month ago, I didn't know what the Dover Amendment was. I don't think half the council really knew what it was. We didn't know much about it. It's not something that we've been, that's come in front of us, so it wasn't, it was very unknown to a lot of us. As we began reading up on it, it's one of those where it was developed in the 50s because no one wanted to have a school next to their home, and no one wanted to have an educational facility. Probably, quite frankly, a lot of people didn't want to live next to a church, or some sort of, some sort of an institution like that. And this is where they gave them some leniency. You know, for us, we look at a buy-right project as a single-family household neighborhood, being able to build a single-family household within the parameters of that building, the building confines. So, this definitely was something that became a little bit new to us, and I think that it needs to be adjusted to today's times and where everything, you know, has a certain place. We hate being threatened by, "This is gonna happen, and you have no say." You know, every community, every direct putter, when they buy a home, when they buy a single-family home, when they buy a multifamily home, when they buy a business, should have an absolute say in what happens next door to them, because it's not right. So, I do, you know, like Counselor Cogliandro mentioned, I know that there was a lot of community input on this, and certainly, that's what we had mentioned. I think that they did a great job. Certainly, some of it was taken on the wrong people, but that's quite all right. We all have thick skin, and we get it. And I'm glad that they were able to have their voices heard, and everyone came to a sensible and mutual agreement. And I hope to see that that continue to happen. So, I'm glad that the right, it looks like, at this point, for that specific project, everyone's gonna leave pretty happy. So, thank you. Counselor Zambudo? Someone wants to speak? Yeah, come on up.
Thank-
Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to congratulate the neighbors. I know how hard you worked, and I know that it was bleak at the beginning, especially when people like me told you there's nothing you could do about it. But, a lot of us, a lot of us were working behind the scenes, putting pressure, and, but the courage of the neighbors to put themselves out there was something to behold. And I certainly support Counselor Rizzo's motion. It's a great motion. These are terrible, this amendment is a terrible thing for a neighborhood, and this time, it worked out, but, you know, the next time, it might not. So, I hope we can, we can make these changes to make it better. So, again, thank you, everybody, for all the hard work.
Megaphones to the State House. All right. Name and address for the record.
Kelly Rizenda, 75 Grover Street, Revere. I just have a couple of questions. Could the, you said it's 300 feet for a butters to be notified. Can that be moved out, I know that's a Massachusetts law, but can that be moved out to 400 feet at least? And I've been here, meetings after meetings, and it just seems to be the same law firm is not, people are saying they're not getting notified. I don't know what you can do to correct that. A certified mail, something needs to be done about that.
So, the, just to answer that, I, we will look into seeing if we can expand that reach to 500 feet, or whatever it may be, or something that might be greater. But that does, I mean, that goes to the city, and the city actually provides the list, and then it gets mailed via certified letter.
But how do you know it goes out?
No, not certified letter. Standard mail. Counsel, Madam Clerk, yes?
The Zoning Act provides for, by definition under the Zoning Act, parties of interest are butters to the butter within 300 feet.
I mean, I work for a law office. I know when I send something out, I have to send a certified mail. I have to get a green card back.
Yeah.
Signed, that that person received it.
We can definitely look at seeing if there's some amendments that we can make. But, you know, I think that's definitely a good point.
And I have one other small, little stupid question.
Go ahead.
I have to give my name and address every time I come up here. Why don't the attorneys have to give their law office they work for?
We did.
No, they don't. They never-
Typically, when we have a public, just now, I asked-
No, they give their, they give their name and their address, but they don't give the law office that they work for.
Okay. Yeah.
No, I know that, but I just want them to state it.
Okay. I mean-
Just, it'd just be nice if they stated.
Typically do.
Yeah. Typically, we get them, and you're right. And you're 100% right. There's definitely a lot of-
The young girl that comes up all the time for Dambiozzo's office never ever states her law office. Just, just a fact.
We probably just, sometimes gets through us, but. Come on up. This is a good, to speak at the podium. Name and address for the record.
Doug Brecher, 15 Arcadia Street. Thank you, guys, for helping us out. Appreciate it. This is just on notifying folks from an operational standpoint. If possible, you could get an opt-in from an email standpoint, and then just use certified email from, like, City Revere, City Revere Notification, XYZ Project. I know some folks, like, for me, I work two jobs. I work from home, working 90-hour weeks, and I don't always have the time to come down here to do this stuff, but obviously, this was an important fight I wanted to be a part of. And I know there's a lot of people that feel the same way, that are just busy, you know? They might not have the time, or, you know. And I think an email, some type of email electronic component notification for folks that are maybe on the, in their 20s and their 30s, I think you get a lot higher rate of response out of that, and it could be fairly painless to do that as an opt-in. Yeah, also, very less expensive. I'm out.
My name is Stephen Fiore, 3 Ellington Street. I want to say thank you, Council President and members of this honorable body. The ward counselors were very helpful throughout this process. They gave us the information we needed and directed us to the correct people we need to speak to. And the at-large counselors are all very helpful, and I've told, I've been told, many of you have fought behind the scenes, and I want to thank you for that. Counselor Rizzo, I think this is a great motion, and as you said, it's come up since '84, Arcadia Street, and I want to say a special thank you, because I know Jerry really, Visconti really fought really hard behind the scenes, and I know he's not one for accolades, but I want to say thank you for protecting my children. I really repeat that, repeat, appreciate that, Mr. Visconti. Regarding the Dover Act, I don't want to be repetitive, but as it was created in 1950, and the city has changed, we've got a lot more denser, we have a lot more buildings, a lot more apartments, and it may not apply to us as it did back then. And I don't think the intent of the Dover Act in 1950 was to allow developers and attorneys to come in in strong-armed neighborhoods and put developments in that, quite frankly, don't fit in that neighborhood. Also, regarding the Dover Act, the unfortunate, the unfortunate part about it is, we have boards and commissions that are appointed, I don't know if it's by the mayor or these boards, and those boards are created to protect us, right? The Zoning Board of Appeals, Conservation, Site Plan Review. And those men and women weren't able to vote, if it came in front of them, yes or no, based on their minds and their hearts, because they were threatened with lawsuits. So, that's something that's troublesome to me, that the body that we have in front of us was also taken out of this process. So, if that's some kind of tool that's gonna be used for developers and attorneys, it's kind of troublesome. I hope you guys will protect us going forward. Lastly, I'd like to apologize if I email, text, or phone calls too much, specifically to our clerk, Melnick. I'm sorry for sending too many away. I don't think, yeah, I don't think you've heard, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I won't, you probably won't hear from me again. I also would have liked, you know, yeah, yeah. No, I don't think I've emailed her before this, other than maybe looking for a wedding certificate, but I don't think that. If he had stayed, I would have liked to apologize to the mayor, because I was also totally sent too many emails, phone calls, and text messages. And it's unfortunate, because I would like to have an open and honest conversation with the man who runs this city, and I'm hoping that he's willing to work with us. I would love to have respectful relationship with him, so I'm hoping that that can be formed over time. And the neighbors of Oak Island, lastly, are gonna be forming a neighborhood association, and we're just hoping that this honorable body will continue to work with us and give us a seat at the table, so to speak, and just allow the residents to be heard, you know, the taxpayers to be heard. We don't want to be treated anything special. We just want to feel safe in our homes. And, you know, I apologize for everything else, but I can never apologize for doing something that's gonna keep my two kids safe. Right or wrong or indifferent, I'm gonna protect them every time, and I hope you guys can understand that and appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Edward Ned Almeida, 40 Arcadia Street. I just want to speak about the Dover Act. In my research on this, and looking at cases that other cities have brought up about the Dover Act, it seems like the biggest problem with the Dover Act is the very, very loose interpretation of the word "educational." As we all saw, the plans for the proposed facility on Arcadia Street consisted of many bedrooms, many bathrooms, corridors, a decent-sized kitchen, a small living room, and a couple of offices. Where is the educational space there? So, in your letter, in your talks with our state delegation, it seems like most areas of Massachusetts who have had to have these types of fights, it all stems around the loose interpretation and definition of the word "educational." So, if, you know, that would be, I would say, the main place to focus in this fight in trying to get the Dover Act amended and changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I believe, I don't think this really needs much more time in legislative affairs, unless we have a favorite counselor, Sorino, that wants to draft a beautiful letter on the behalf of the city council, which I'll ask you to do in your free time.
I'm actually recused from discussion.
See? Well, you can, you can guide me on the side. All right. I think that we can vote on this tonight. So, all in favor? Sorted.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by councilors, oh, I'm sorry, on that last motion, Counselor Sorino is recorded as recused. So, calendar item number 21, motion presented by Counselor Morbido and Counselor Sorino, that the city council award a certificate of appreciation to the Bicella family. The Bicella family participates in park builds, city cleanups, but more importantly, organize their own family cleanups around, throughout North Revere. Their actions of going the extra mile for the community is not overlooked by this honorable body, therefore warrants the certificate of acknowledgement and appreciation for your contribution to help enhance our community aesthetics.
Counselor Sorino, and then Counselor Morbido? Who was the official maker of that motion?
Technically, Counselor Morbido was.
He's gonna let you go first.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. We, as a city council, passed this motion in the height of COVID, because during the height of COVID, Ms. Bicella- height of COVID, Ms. Bicella and her family were out many times on the bike trail in North Revere, cleaning up, taking literally trash bags full of debris and garbage, and just kind of trying to do their part to beautify their neighborhood. And Counselor Marbido and I put this in two years ago. It was approved unanimously. However, we didn't have the presentation, because we didn't have members of the public in person during that time of the pandemic. So, this is more of a procedural to get it on the calendar so that we can honor them accordingly in a couple of weeks. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Marbido.
I'll save my comments for the presentation. Thank you, Mr. President, for skipping over me.
Oh, no. I figured you'd want it that way. I'll also comment at the end, but I will say that there's a lot of people in this community, this 65, 70,000 residents in the city, and it's very noticeable that her and her family would take trips into the woods and just clean up random trash, bagfuls and bagfuls at a time, with not looking for any recognition. And it was, I think it's great that she was showing that to her younger children, to recognize what they can do as community members and the impact they can have. So, it's admirable as a family to see that happen. So, thank you, and I look forward to the night of the awards. All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Counselor Powers, that the mayor request Mastott Traffic and Engineering to inspect Route 1A at Revere Street to determine if the roadway is graded properly. Further, that the Revere Police Department and/or state police provide stronger traffic enforcement in this area. Additionally, in the interest of public safety, that traffic bollards be installed to protect the structure at 1133 North Shore Road that recently incurred damage from a motor vehicle crash involving speeding. Counselor Zambudo is recorded as recused from this motion.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I believe it's 11:29, and that's my mistake, not the city clerk's mistake. About a week and a half ago, we had a serious accident down there. It's not the first time it's happened. Three or four years ago, we had a car go right into the condo building and into the child's bedroom. Thank God the child wasn't there. I've been told by people that seem to have some knowledge of the grading situation at these stop signs and lights, that it needs to be looked at in that respect. It also, we also need to have a very strong state police and Revere police presence down there, not just at the Revere Street lights, but all along the highway there, North Shore Road. Too many accidents down there, down in the Oak Island area, we had a car go into a house twice, two different occasions, within six months, and that should not be acceptable to the city. Someday, God forbid, somebody could get seriously hurt down there, and I think that's something we have to prevent. And get our police out there, and the chief's here right now, and that's no, you know, knock toward yourself, but I think, I'm glad you are here, because you now have a firsthand knowledge of it. And we have to have our police out there, and not only our police, because the major responsibility for that area is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the state police, and they have a barracks right down here in Revere, and I think they have to be more active out there along that stretch. It's a very dangerous area, and hopefully, this motion will have some impact on the organizations involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Great motion. Any other councils? Counselor Zambudo is recused. All in favor? So ordered. So, before we end tonight, any, anything else for this evening? Counselor Marbido?
Point of personal privilege, if we can wish the council president a happy birthday.
Who's that? Too late, it was a couple days ago. Thank you very much. I also, point of personal, point of personal privilege tonight, the Revere Boys Basketball Team was, took an hour and a half bus ride down to Plymouth South and took them down. So, Revere, congratulations. They will advance, they will advance to play Neshoba on Thursday evening, so good luck to the boys in the playoffs. With that being said, Ira's, happy birthday, Ira Novoselski. Motion to adjourn. Have a great night.